Thank you.
Yep. Well, hopefully this will last throughout the meeting. If not, we may have to disconnect from you if you freeze up or try to come back in. So, we have to be able to see both ways to conduct the business. All right. Anything else housekeeping wise before I start? All right. I'd like to call this special meeting to order. Tonight, before we start, we have three representatives from BWP and Associates here to talk us through the next step of the superintendent search process. I have just a few items of housekeeping, first of all, to everyone attending or listening to the livestream. Thank you. We are livestreaming this special meeting because we have Board Director Mary France, who is in Belgium, and participating virtually. And in order to do so, according to open-meeting law, we livestream this meeting. Just a couple of housekeeping notes. I am going to ask those attending tonight, and for all future meetings, a little bit of help. We love having people in the audience and being here to be a part of our meetings. I just want to remind all of us that a board meeting is a public meeting and not the Publix meeting. So, the only time we can get together and do the business of the district is when we're in quorum and we're together and we're public, which is great, because then everyone can observe the business being done. But we have had some increasing amounts of just noise during meetings, clapping or outbursts or even side conversations. And I've had some comments both from administrators who are trying to focus on the meeting, distracted by conversations behind them. And it's hard for us up here when we see conversations happening and we're trying to pay attention to a speaker, or arrive at consensus for, you know, voting or something like that. So, I'm just going to ask for everybody's help from this point forward. And it's really important that we kind of reset right now, because we're looking at a few meetings where we'll be looking at candidates for the superintendent position. And we're asking a lot of candidates to come forward and to be public and have their name known, that they're looking and considering us as their next career move. And the very nature of school board meetings is we are public, and so interviews will be taking place in the public as well. And it's challenging, you know, to get up and it's challenging to be interviewed, especially for a higher level position. Add to that, seven people around the table interviewing, and then an audience behind you. And so, we're going to be asking that from this point forward. We don't have those side conversations. You don't lean over to your neighbor. It's going to be a chance for candidates coming in to both see, you know, what level of respect we can offer them and support. And also, just to be fair to the administrators and the board members, who are trying to not pay attention to what's happening in the audience as much as what's happening in front of them and the work they're doing. So, we appreciate your help. We do value having you here. And unless you're being asked to address the board, we'll ask for silence. And if that is difficult, then we'll just ask that you maybe watch via livestream so that we can really stay focused on this important work. Before we turn it over to our BWP team, I'm sure they will touch on this as well, but I just want to remind everybody that we are so grateful to our community for the robust level of engagement we have had from stakeholders. I don't know, but in the history of the district, this might be the most upfront engaged we've had community input. And because we had almost 200 participants in our focus groups, almost 2,000 survey responses, we really have good idea of what our community as a whole is looking for in our next leader. And that is, has helped our team of consultants kind of filter through applicants as they come in. They've used that information from our community to bring forward a slate of candidates for us to consider. They'll use that same information to coach us as we think about how to prepare for interview questions, and the rubric that we'll use to evaluate candidates who come before us. So, again, our deepest appreciation to community members, to parents, to staff, to city collaborators, to students, for helping us upfront. It's really set us up, I think, for a great process from this point going forward. To just kind of look ahead, tonight we will consider the slate being presented before us. After that, we tentatively have two days scheduled for a first round of interviews. Right now, that we're looking at the 25th and 27th. Those will be recorded. They will not be livestreamed. It's our, every, it's in our interest to not give candidates on day two of interviews a heads up to what the interview process is like. So, those will be recorded but not livestreamed. And then after the two days, probably, of first round interviews go, the board will be deliberating to see if there are, is a candidate or candidates who rise to the level we think we want to bring back for final interviews. So, just to kind of give us a perspective of where we've been and where we are headed. At this point, I'd love to turn it over to Steve Griesbach and his team to lead us through the next steps. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you very much for having us. And I'd like to begin by introducing our team. And we'll introduce ourselves. My name is Steve Griesbach, and I'm a partner with BWP and Associates and a retired school superintendent from the suburban Chicagoland area. And I've been with the firm now for nine years.
Suzanne, can you hear this, the mic?
Thank you. So, Jane Behrens, retired superintendent of Rosemont, Apple Valley-Egan. That was my last nine years. Thirty-six years in public ed and helping out with the search for Prior Lake Savage area schools.
Hi, I'm Ann Noland. Like Steve, I'm a retired school superintendent from the Chicago suburbs. I'm also a partner in the firm and have been doing searches for a number of years. I'll leave it at that. So, nice to see everyone in person.
Thank you for being here.
We'd like to begin by thanking the Board of Education for all their efforts and support throughout this process. But also, want to echo what, Michael, what you said about the involvement of the community. In these days, we sometimes worry that people don't care enough about schools and don't want to be involved. And that certainly wasn't true of your community. People not only took the survey in droves, a very high percent of people in your community took the survey, over 1,950 surveys. But then they attended focus groups. And that was a drop-in. You didn't have to be invited to most of those. There was two forms that were very well-attended. And so, we got some great information from that. And that information was critical to the work we did as we recruited candidates and as we evaluated the applicants for the position and then interviewed them ourselves. And it will also be critical to the work that you do, to know that you have that voice from the community already coming forward and already in your hands. And so, I know that the board is intent on doing a very, very good job with the search. And we have the information, I think, to do that. Marcus, you're going to help us out by advancing it. And I think the, unfortunately, this may not be visible to anybody, but those people with really great eyes. But this is the timeline that was pretty much organized and set up with the board. And we are moving forward on an aggressive timeline. It's worked out really well. And so, there's a very strong possibility that by May 9th, you will have named a new superintendent for the schools for the next school year. Jane's going to talk a little bit about reviewing the search process and the things that we did. And then we'll get into some of the nuts and bolts of everything.
Yeah. So, we'll start with the marketing and the recruitment of candidates. And so, you'll see, if you're close, BWP website. So, these are different sites that it was advertised on, the American Association of School Administrators, EDWeek, Minnesota School Association, the National Alliance for Black School Educators, Association of Latino, yeah, Association of Latino Men and Superintendents. And then there was recruitment of the consultants and especially being in Minnesota and being able to talk to Nash, or excuse me, state leaders that may possibly want to come to Prior Lake Savage area schools, which I will say, and I have said before, it is such an attractive district. So, that also helped with people wanting to apply here. And I know there was a little bit, not concerned, but really wanted to accelerate the process. And so, what did that mean for the number of people that wanted to come forward for this in that condensed timeline? Good news. There were 21 applicants. And there was another search of another Minnesota suburban school district had double the time, but about the same amount of applicants. So, that was a relief for everyone. You can see six different states came from the applicants, and 11 of them were superintendents. Moving right along here. Steve, you had mentioned the profile. And Chair Nelson, thank you so much for bringing up the amount of people that participated in order to produce this profile. So, everyone has mentioned this before, but there was over 1,900 surveys, staff, students, and community members, and 200 attended the focus groups. And what was so great was the voice came from, as we mentioned, a lot of different stakeholders. So, and I was privileged to do a couple of those focus groups and loved all of them, but the students were always quite fun and fascinating, too.
At the last meeting on the 11th of April, you accepted the leadership profile as presented. And tonight, we'd like to talk to you about the candidate slate. As Ann is going to talk about each candidate, I'd like to let you know that you have a national slate. You had a national search. The fact that there were more than just Minnesotans represented in that search means that people were interested not only in the state but outside of it. And many of the people we talked to and interviewed were accomplished and talented school leaders. We talked to 10 of the applicants, almost 50% of the people, and learned a lot, and we're impressed by them.
Yeah.
And tonight, we're going to present the top applicants for the position. And you will have four candidates from which to choose from. And they're going to be identified until you accept the slate by a letter. So, there's candidate A, B, C, and D, four of them. And Ann's going to introduce each of them. And her biggest challenge doing this is to not use a pronoun that gives across gender.
So, bear with me, bear with me a little bit. But at this point, we try not to give out any identifying characteristics until you have approved the slate. So, I don't say a pronoun or a gender, and it's a little bit tough. So, I hope I don't, hopefully, I won't make a mistake here. So, if you want to look at Candidate A, that is our first candidate that we're presenting tonight. And as Steve said, all of the candidates we are talking to you about have had successful careers and long tenures where they have served. So, they all bring that to, reach a little different, and they have different strengths. But they all have been successful in their careers, as were the 10 that we talked to, and the 21, too, that applied. I mean, you don't get to the point in your career without a lot of successes that you can point to in the application and in the interview process. But Candidate A is the one we will start with. And Candidate A has a national certi, I'm going to talk about their education and then their experience each time. So, just like the printed slide says. But Candidate A has a national certificate of education from University of Benin, and then a bachelor's of education in University of Mbaden, and I hope I'm saying that correctly, and a master's from the same university, and then a doctorate from Hamlin University in St. Paul. Candidate A also is currently an assistant superintendent. And Candidate A has held that position for 12 years and performed a variety of different roles in the assistant superintendentcy. So, while the person has been a superintendent for, or assistant for 12 years, the job has changed. So, brings a variety of experiences there. The person was also a high school superintendent, high school principal, excuse me, for four years. And then before that, a high school principal for five years. And this person was also Minnesota Principal of the Year during the candidate's tenure. Before that, the candidate started out as a teacher. So, that's Candidate A. And so, we'll move on and just keep going with the candidates. To Candidate B, again, revealing, trying to reveal very little information about the candidates until you accept them. As far as education is concerned, Candidate B has a BA from University of Northern Iowa, where the candidate was very involved in sports and served as captain of the team that the candidate was involved with. The candidate also has a master's from...
St. Mary's University?
St. Mary's University. We corrected, I'm sorry, we have corrected this on your copy, but I was wanting to make sure I was saying this correct on our copy. And a six-year certificate from St. Cloud University State and Minnesota State College as the superintendent certification. So, a specialist degree, the six-year certificate, and then the certification from Minnesota State College. The person is a nationally certified superintendent and has been a superintendent in two different districts, both districts for four years. Before that, the person was, the candidate was a middle school principal for seven years. And that middle school principalship also involved being principal of an alternative school. Correct me if I...
No, you're correct.
Okay. And before that, a high school principal for two years, a dean, and a teacher, and a coach. So, another long, successful career with lots of experience.
Could I excuse me just a minute? Mary, do you have a question? Mary, did you have a question? You have your hand raised?
I think she's frozen.
I agree.
Can we just continue?
She left the meeting?
Yeah. Okay. Let's just keep going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll get her back. But Candidate C has a, education-wise, had a bachelor's degree from University of St. Thomas, a master's degree from University of Minnesota, and a doctorate, education doctorate from University of St. Thomas. This candidate's experience is superintendent, three years, chief academic officer for leadership and learning for seven years. And actually, there were some other roles that the person did that were at the assistant superintendent or associate superintendent level. This seven years was all at one district. And there again, as in our Candidate A, a variety of roles that the person performed. And then a junior high principal for three years, an elementary principal for three years, a program corrector, director, coordinator for five years. And those three positions were all in the same district. So, again, demonstrating longevity in one district. Before that, the person was a social worker. Candidate C. Our last candidate is Candidate D. And Candidate D has a bachelor's of arts from Concordia College, a master's in science from Minnesota State University, and then again, the six-year certificate and education specialist degree, which would be the superintendent certification from Minnesota State University at Mankato.
Mankato.
Mankato. Thank you. I'll make sure I get everything pronounced correctly. And the person's experience is currently, the person is a, the candidate is a director of teaching and learning. And that person has been doing that position for 12 years. This particular district does not have assistant or associate superintendents. So, this position functions as that kind of a cabinet-level position, and has been doing it for 12 years. Again, and the role seems to have grown over those 12 years that the person has done. The candidate has done a variety of things. Before that, the candidate was a, Candidate D was a middle school principal, and assistant principal, and assistant administrator for, I think, six years altogether, again, in the same district. And before that, a teacher. So, those are your four candidates. And I'm sorry that we can't, that we didn't provide any additional background, but we're going to, you're going to have that in a few minutes, hopefully.
One of the things you'll, I'll say about the entire pool is that what we look for lots of times in candidates is a progression. And oftentimes, we're most impressed when we see that within the same organization. Because when you constantly earn the respect of those who know you best, that's quite a statement about who you are and what you're able to do. And the second thing I'd like to say is that I don't want you to feel guilty about this, but when you hire someone, if, when you hire one of these four, it's going to create a hole in another school district that will be significant, and they're going to have to fill. And that's something that just happens during these processes.
And as we talk to references, that's almost always part of the topic of conversation, that references are always happy for the candidate, but there are a lot of mixed emotions about losing a good candidate. And that was the case with these, when we talked to their references, too.
So, that's the candidate slate that we're going to present tonight. We, once you, once the board accepts the candidate slate, and we'll go on to the next slide, and really, that means that you acknowledge that you want to talk to these people. You're not hiring them yet. You've got to interview them, decide whether they meet your criteria, and that this is the person you'd like to hire. And so, really, I don't think it requires any board action, but rather, it requires you to, as a group, come to some consensus that, yeah, we would like to talk to these four people. Once that's done, we can reveal the names to you, and we'll do that at the end of the meeting. And then, we'd like to begin by doing what we call a kind of a workshop with the board about how you move forward with all of this. I know that some of you, I think only one board member currently has been through the hiring of a new superintendent. And so, for everyone else, this is new. And so, what we'd like to do is help you to prepare you for this. And so, you feel comfortable in that role and prepared, so that you can really spend the time listening and thinking and considering everything that you've heard from your community, from your staff, and everything that we've shared about the candidates, so that you can move forward with confidence in hiring a new superintendent. So, the first step would be, you'll accept them. The second thing I want to talk to you a little bit about is the need for confidentiality. And that is, even though the candidate's names are public, your conversations in your interviews will be public for the people here, but your impressions and feelings about those will not be, will not be open. And so, when you go through this process, you can talk with each other. And that will be done at public meetings when you deliberate over, about the candidates. But people want to say, well, what'd you think of Candidate C? And every time you engage in a conversation like that, you're inviting people in. And maybe that's not where you want to be. And maybe you don't want to share those things, because you can't guarantee that that information isn't going to be shared in another way or in another place. So, I urge you that as you, as you consider these candidates, have your conversations with each other in public as you're supposed to, and not anyplace else where people might stop and be curious about it. Because I, in any community I've worked with, people are really fascinated by what's going on. And so, as you work through this, maintain that level of confidentiality with each other, but also on behalf of the candidates. We're also going to talk to you about, you've already got an interview schedule. We're also going to talk to you a little bit about protocols and provide you with some tools to help you make some decisions. And then talk to you a little bit about how you bring this to a close. This will probably, most likely be our last visit to Prior Lake, but that doesn't mean it's the last time we're going to talk. We're going to be available throughout your work, because this is still important, and we want to support you to be the best you possibly can be. So, let's go back to that leadership profile again, because that came out from much of what you've, much, much input from many people. And what we wanted to say is, we hope that in some of the things, and as I was reviewing the candidates on the flight up here again, it reminded me of how well each of these candidates brings out some parts that are really important to your community. Whether it be, you know, the people that are concerned about social, emotional health of students, or their mental health here. Social worker has some skills that might bring to that. If you talk a little bit about academic achievement, well, you have academic officers who have that experience. When you look at budget, I was looking through, and then some, all these people have worked with budgets and managed to figure out how to do more with less. And I know those are all concerns that you have. So, I just want to let you know that we kept those things in mind, even though we didn't talk a whole lot about those this evening. So, this leadership profile is those skills and personal qualities and experiences of your ideal candidate. It is probably unlikely that everyone will have those exact same things. They'll check every single box with an A+. But they'll check enough of them, as they did with us, that you'll say, this is why BWP included them in the slate. It's going to guide you as you go about and develop choice questions for candidate interviews. So, as you think about it, what do you want to learn about these people? It's going to be related to things in that leadership profile.
And we should probably mention, too, that that's how we design our questions, too. So, we tailor, we don't have a book of questions that we use when we're interviewing. We tailor our questions, our screening questions. Every, every single time we do a superintendent search, we tailor the questions to reflect the profile. And so, and then you'll do the same. And people will talk to you about a rubric later on to rate, but it all fits together and helps you make that final decision.
We're going to provide you with the tools to assess the relative strengths of candidates. And I'm going to tell you right now, there's not a magic button that says, write candidate, that all of a sudden, this is an art, and you're going to be representing your community in that. And then we're going to offer some really good language as you lead that leadership profile as you talk about, and have conversations about each of the candidates. The interviews go through two rounds, and those dates were already shared with you. The first round, and there's not, you're going to have four candidates, not five, as it says on the slide. Sorry about that. I leave a mistake that just makes me feel human.
We're all human.
Anyway. And those interviews are usually between an hour and an hour and a half long each. We urge you to make those interviews a comfortable place. You know, it's hard, you know, when you're in a formal setting in the public to make it comfortable. But the ways in which you act, and the ways in which you set it up, you're having a board meeting in the public, not a public board meeting. And so, they're interviewing in public with the board. And so, the ability for the candidates to say, to concentrate what's going on is really important. So, I really appreciate your statement about, and when you interview candidates, if the audience is distracting to a candidate, you won't see their best, because they'll hear something or something you'll hear, and it'll distract them and lose their train of thought. And that's not great. And so, we're going to rely on the community to support that effort as well, so they can support your good work. You'll develop a list of questions, and we've got some sample questions in the packets that you have in front of you there. And then, we urge you, you'll have time for about 10 to 14 questions. And occasionally, you might ask a follow-up, but we ask that you, and we think it's best practice to ask each candidate the same question in the same way. If you change the wording, it changes the question, even though that wasn't your intent. And when you do that, have fun and enjoy this part of it. This is, you're getting to meet somebody new and get to know them. And I always urge candidates to do the same thing. Be who you are. And I think the board needs to be who they are, because just as you will be asking the candidates questions, they are going to be looking at you and trying to say, do I really want to work with these people? How can I work and support them? And will this be a good experience professionally? And will we, will we enjoy the work that we do together? And so, really work on that piece. And then, as you go through, we urge you to collect evidence. And later on, I'll show you a rubric that, it's not rocket scientist stuff. It takes your leadership profile and says, when you get some pieces that say, this fits into this work, whether it be about collaboration, or it's about some other piece that's in the leadership profile, write it down. So, you'll start out with four candidates, and we hope that by round two, you'll go to one or two candidates. You know, sometimes one candidate really shines, and you're saying, nope, this is where we want to go. And that's where you'll start. We generally suggest that you do one candidate per day. And you may ask that candidate to come in and do a presentation for you, just so you could see what it would look like. Your superintendent now makes presentations to the board all the time, as do many of the other cabinet people. And you want to see that style, and whether it's understandable. And it may be something they've done in their current position, rather than create something new. But it just gives you a sense. And it's a short presentation. It shouldn't be, you know, 45 minutes long, and then you won't get to ask any questions. And you want to use that time with the second candidate to explore topics from round one that came up. And so, you may have some questions that are slightly different in that second round than you did in the first round, for different candidates, for different reasons. And once again, we've got a list of potential questions, more than you could ever ask, and more than you ever, and those are in the packet that you have in front of you on the right-hand side. There's a whole bunch of resources in there. And you may look, and you may probably want to tour the district. I've been through the district now twice. And every time I go through the community and the district, I get more impressed with Prior Lake Savage. Your schools will sell this place, and the people will just, that I've met here... Your schools will sell this place, and the people will just, that I've met here, will just cement any deal you have.
I just want to say, too, the candidates that, you know, Ann went through are very excited to come here. So there is a sense of excitement and understanding and, and thinking this would be a great district. So I just love what you said, Steve. The whole idea is, is it a good match for both, right? The superintendent wants to be here, and you want that superintendent. And so, it, it'll be a bit of both sides trying to figure that out. Thanks.
In your packet, also on the right-hand side, is a toolbox. And in there, you will find probably seven or eight pages of, of sample questions. They're divided up into, into various categories, and we'll go through those in a second. There'll be an interviewing scoring rubric, just so you know what's there. An article, an article on interviewing strategies that we found particularly helpful from the Washington State School Board Association, and I think you'll find that to be really helpful in reading it. And then some tools for building consensus, because you would like to get to a point where you all feel so good about the candidates, that it's, it's, it's a, it's a 7-0 vote. And that's the best way to, to start off the relationship with your next superintendent. So one of the things that you-
Can I, can I mention something here, too, Steve? What, we all have a little bit different definitions of consensus, but the one I like to use is that consensus is when most people agree, and everybody's had their say. But the other thing I'd like to say is that, when you move your two people forward, or your, your one, you ought to say, you ought to be prepared to vote yes on either of those people. Now, you've, you've got a preference, but at the end of the day, you should be able to vote yes on either one. And then you know, whatever consensus the board comes to, you're able to say, I'm, I know that I can support that decision, and as a board, we made this together with two good people. Or in some cases, three, but, so if you kind of keep that in mind, that you're moving forward people that you, you know that, that you would, if the, if the rest of the board members so desire, and that's the, the direction the board goes, you can also support that person. So I think that's important to keep in mind.
To give you an example, when I retired from my school district, the board came down to two finalists, and they were both really good people, and would have done great jobs in that. One, my board president took me aside, and, and she said that, at the end, she says, I really liked candidate B better, more than candidate A, but every other board member really liked candidate A. It wasn't that I didn't like candidate B, I just liked candidate, uh, candidate A, I liked candidate B better. He said, but at that point in time, I realized that the statement I needed to make to my community was that I'm 100% behind, because a 6-1 vote doesn't get you anywhere.
Right.
And, and it's worked out very well, that, that, that person is still in the district now nine years later, and so, and doing a great job.
It doesn't mean the other person couldn't have been too, good, too. But I think Steve's point is that, you know, you need, we want to send a message to the community that you've worked together now to, to find a candidate that you're all supportive of, and they can have confidence in that.
And, and so, there are interview questions in your packet, and you can probably find those in the, the materials off to the right. And we've listed them into various topics, from general and personal, so who they are and what they've been doing, to their visionary instructional leadership, or visionary leadership, to teaching and learning, human resources, belonging, diversity, inclusion, collaborative leadership, financial and organizational management, school board relations, and effective communication. And so, what you'll do, and, and what we suggest that you do before you leave tonight is, a group among the board members, divide yourselves up into areas that you feel a particular interest in or knowledgeable about, and then write a couple of questions, or choose a couple of questions from the, from the list that we gave. There's nothing magical in the questions we have. The quest, the best questions are the ones you care about, that'll lead you the most. And, and we always say, they just give you ideas of, you know, you try not to ask, answer, ask a question that is a yes/no answer. Do you like kids? Oh, yes.
We hope.
You know, can you live within your means in their district? Oh, yeah, I can do that. But you want to have them to, to, to really elaborate on what they know and they've been able to do. And some of the questions we have in there are what we call behavior-based questions, because we think the best way to know how someone's going to behave in the future is how they behaved in the past. And so, think about those, and think about ways to do those. Don't feel shy about not giving, about creating a little, a short scenario for them to look at. And then try not to, and I'm guilty of this all the time, having the four-part question, because if you think about it, an hour, an hour and 15 minutes, you've got about four minutes of question, and the last thing you want to do, well, what was the last part of that question? We've actually seen and have done it, where people give the questions to the candidates when they come, they pick them up when they leave, so that they can refer back to it, so they don't have to go and, and ask again what that is.
I like that.
We suggest that you have one person to introduce and conclude the interview. Welcome, and oftentimes, that's the board chair. I've already talked about dividing those topic areas for questions into, among specific members. And then, remember, really concentrate on your leadership profile when you pick those questions. Those questions are, I would call them a list and more of a generic list than a specific for Prior Lake. You're going to match those up and see where they are. And then someone create a master list, so you all have those handy right next to you. A couple tips for interviews. You know, I always try to make sure that in the questions I ask, I don't give them the answer. What are you looking for? That happens a lot. You know, be consistent in how the questions are asked. Smile, enjoy that process. Remember, once again, this is a give and take between you and, and your next superintendent. You want to let them know who you are, and that they're not going to get a lot of chances to do that, other than in that formal interview process. And so, it's okay to smile, it's okay to laugh, it's okay to have fun, it's okay to look collegial among each other. And so, do those things. If they say something you've got to know, it's okay also to ask a follow-up question to clarify it. Listen and watch, so, you know, we think that nonverbal communication is as important as verbal, and, and what you hear. And so, and then collect evidence, and I'm going to show you a little tool to do that. And then, there's a list of things you shouldn't do. And, you know, when you talk to candidates, it's never a good idea to violate state or federal law. So if it's asking something too personal, or asking them that, something that is not germane to their job, it's not a good question to ask. And, you know, even if, even if someone asks it, you could, and by accident, and I've seen it happen, you simply say, you know, we're going to skip that question right now. And I think that's a good place to be. In the packet in front of you, also have a sample rubric, and I've only written a part of it. And it's, it's simple, I'm not going to say that this is sheer genius. It lists on the left-hand side, the leadership profile, and this is just a, on the, on the screen, a small example of it. So you put the leadership profile piece in the key words. And then as you listen to it, and, and even if you've asked a question about bringing people together and making decisions, you may hear something later on that's a piece of evidence you want to, to include in it. And, and simply write that down. And you've got more writing room on the sheets that I gave you, rather than what's visible on the screen, because it just didn't fit, and I'm fussy about those things. And so, you'll have each of those. And then I suggest that you rate each answer on a scale of one to four. And the reason why I say one to four is, if you go five, then a lot of people end up in the middle, and you've got to make a decision. Fall somewhere. And, and, and those, those scores are, you know, you know, you may change your score later on after discussion, when you hear evidence among your colleagues, you, oh, I missed that. Yeah, you're right. Now I think about it differently. So, you know, it's okay to write in pencil, it's okay to write in pen and cross it up, whatever you do. But know that, that whatever you write in there, that's something that, and you may wait until the end to do it. It's going to be an important way of helping you to make a decision. That's just one way of doing it. You may have some other ways of doing it that make more sense, but this is just one tool. And so, you, what I suggest that you do is, you pull those, those two sheets out, have someone duplicate those, and, and have one for each candidate. Now, when you get to the end of all of this stuff, and you've rated, you've interviewed all the candidates, you've had these wonderful conversations, you've met some amazing people, you have to pick who it is you want to move forward to. And coming to consensus is really a difficult thing. We often suggest that, though we think all of the candidates are great, we know that you're going to get a better sense of who's a better fit. And so, we suggest that you try to eliminate those candidates that are not, you don't see moving forward, that are not a good fit, from your perspectives, because that's what matters. You're the, you're the elected Board of Education. And eliminate those candidates first. And because you have to do this in public, you know, Minnesota's a kind state, and, and I know that one of the things you won't do is, you know, if they're not going to move forward, you don't have a lot of discussion about their shortcomings. But you'll also want to review all the materials from the remaining candidates. And we'll provide you with a link for all the application materials they shared with us. And I'll be sharing that with your board chair, who will get that out to all of you. It's, it's on a secure Dropbox, and so you'll get a password and everything else for that. And you'll be able to read up on, and see all their application materials, as well as their resumes, any letters of reference, transcripts, and things like that, that they submitted to us. So after you've reviewed all the things, we suggest that you, you focus on choosing two top candidates. Sometimes you only have one. If, if there's amazing consensus around one, you start there and, and move on. Discuss those areas where you have agreement, but also there will be areas where you don't necessarily agree. And that's not a bad thing. You know, we, sometimes we, we, we avoid conflict because it makes us uncomfortable. But sometimes, out of that, that conflict or that divergent thinking, we get a better idea and a better understanding of things. So I think it's really important, not only as you listen to candidates, but that you really extend yourselves and listen to each other as much as you possibly can. Remember, I started out with confidentiality? Keep the conversations in the room. You know, you work really hard to follow the letter of the law with your open meetings. Keep that moving the same way with you as you move this forward. And really, as you listen to people who have a different point of view than you, you know, it's really hard, really important that you seek to understand their positions before you argue. Sometimes we're thinking, when we're listening to someone, we're trying to think of our response, rather than listening to what they have to say. And it's so important that we hear them all the way through, not only with, with our head and our ears, and, but with our heart, too, and see where they're coming from, because oftentimes, there's more common ground than we ever believed there is, and we've got more to learn from listening effectively than other, than, than anything else. And then the, the seventh thing we talk about is, stay true to the leadership profile. And, you know, that's what, that's what you've accepted, that's what you, you said matters in this community, and that's honoring your agreement with the community, that this is what we're working on. And then be evidence-based. Take the stuff that you hear, and not how you feel, or the way someone dressed, or, you know, they, they had something goofy on their application. If, if they, they shined, and everything else says it, use that evidence that really tells you who they are. And then, and we always say, work towards consensus. Sometimes you use voting to, as a last resort, to move it in that direction, to eliminate people, but that's your last resort. And, and we say, always avoid it. We think that conflict develops among board members in choosing candidates, not necessarily because they see candidates differently, but because they see the leadership profile differently. You've got seven different perspectives about what's most important in that leadership profile. And so, when you get down to it, and you have some, some disagreements among members, really think about, you know, where their priorities lie, and why they think that if, if it were candidate A that's the most important, well, they saw some things that were, that were, you know, that superseded anything else in that leadership profile, that made all the difference in the world. And candidate B didn't have some of those things. And so, sometimes you're going to have to put those cards back on the table to have some of that discussion. So, you know, as you think and read through the leadership profile again, prior to the interviews, and as you think about it, it's not a bad idea to go back and talk about the things that matter the most to you, as a board member in that piece. Once you get it down to finalist, we think it's important that you go through this, closing the search in a really good way. We've checked references in all of these, we've looked at their, their social media profiles and things like that. We think it's important that somebody on the board looks at the candidates and calls the references. If you're the board chair, wouldn't you like to talk about the board chair, or the, the person that supervises them directly in their other district? And have that conversation, even though we've already checked on it, and, and, and thought it was sound enough to there, maybe you're going to hear something that, that helps you. Go through the full Minnesota employment verification requirements. For any other employee, the superintendent has to have those background checks that are required, whether you're driving a bus here, or you're, you're leading this, this school district. Work on your employment contract. I know that you currently have one with your current superintendent, and you're going to, you're going to revisit that with your attorney and decide where that's at. And then begin to think about some goals for that person that you're going to hire. Look at unemployment, look at some goal settings that, and that'll be part of how you will evaluate that person moving forward. And be thoughtful about it, and I know that this is one thing you're going to work on with your communications director, is you're going to really work hard on how you're going to introduce this new superintendent to the community, to your whole community. You know, you know, it's, it's great to meet the teachers or the people who come to board meetings, but, you know, this is a way, how do you strategically and systematically help them to understand the different communities you serve, the different leaders that are there, as well as people who have different views within your community? And, and the better they know the community, and, and I think you can use, really, the, the last month of the school year to really help that person get an understanding of it. It's not uncommon for people prior to their first official day in the district, which will probably be July 1st, to have spent a lot of time here. And so, you'll work on those things. And then, work with your current superintendent on, on planning for that transition into the new role. That's one of the greatest gifts that, that she can give the next candidates, to, to help them to be successful. Mine was to set a really low bar, but I think Terry can do a better job of that. As consultants, we want to make sure that you understand that, you know, if we talk about it, we're not done until you're done, and then we're still not done. And so, one of the things that, that we promise to do is, is to mentor your new superintendent. That means we're probably going to mean that one of the three of us, or, will be in contact with that person on a regular basis, to, to ask and support, and provide that additional voice of, of, of experience. We don't want to get in, in between you and your superintendent, but just to provide that safe place to, to, to explore some issues. We also offer a two-year guarantee. If it doesn't work out, we come back to do it for expenses only, and there's no additional charge. And we also want to let you know that, in working with a new superintendent, boards need to have a good relationship, too. So if you're struggling with anything from how to evaluate that person, to how to, how to work on a governance model, where, you know, you stay in your lanes, they stay in their lanes, and, and everyone does their job, but it all mutually supports each other, we'll help and support you in that work, too, as you move forward, as well as your, you know, we know your state association for, will do the same kind of work. So in, in essence, that's kind of what we've wanted to talk about with you tonight, but I bet you have some questions. And since I did all the talking, I'm going to let Jane in, and, and answer all the questions.
I'll answer all the questions.
Yeah. So.
Steve, do you want us to, at what point do we discuss if we're going to improve the slate brought forward? And do we ask questions before that? And then, and then the process? Once we've approved that, then do we ask more questions about the process? How, how do you recommend?
There is no right or wrong way of doing it. So you could say, yeah, we want to, we're going to give these four a try, and that's what you're really agreeing to do. And, and then before we leave, we'll give you a fact sheet on each one of them.
Okay.
And you'll know who they are.
And then you'll have your, then they'll have their-
And then you'll have the other material.
The Dropbox, yeah, the Dropbox, okay.
Is it most appropriate to do that, to discuss and do that first, and then move on to questions about process?
Sure, that's worse.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with that? All right, then I'm going to open it up for discussion about considering if we want to get, if we have direction from the board to accept the four candidates. And I will just ask one point of clarification, and that is, I know you've said upfront that when it gets to this point in the game, we've built a lot of trust with you to take what we've given you and what our community's given you to make this election, because we have to have very minimal information upfront to choose. So I am confident, sitting here, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you have used the leadership profile and the guidance from our community and us to bring them forward, so we can trust in that as we consider approving.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open up for comments or questions to see what direction- I'm going to open up for comments or questions to see what direction we're headed. Jonathan?
If I could elaborate just on Michael's comment with a question. If it would be helpful for me to just hear more from your end, the process of going from 21 to the four that you have presented to us, understanding it is part of the following leadership profile and so on, sort of what got you from there to here? And how many of those folks did you actually have conversations with and so on?
It is a process. Some of the, as you well know, some of the people we have done some recruiting with, and we've talked to our colleagues about them, some of the people we didn't know before an application was submitted. But people submit through one of those routes, either by being recruited or by seeing the advertisement that we did on your behalf. And then on our, they submit applications to us. We're the only people that can see them. And that took place over a period of time that Steve described to you. We're looking at those applicants all the time. So every day or two, we're going in and looking. And if we know somebody, we'll call somebody that might give us a little bit of background information. So that's the whole informal process that is ongoing throughout the search. Once the search, in this particular case, we did a rolling search, which meant we didn't say, everything has to be in by this day. We said to candidates, get your information in quickly, because we would like to move the school, the school board and us would like to move along quickly, so that as soon as their materials came in, we began looking through them and making some decisions. Once we had decided a date that we were going, the three of us were going to interview via Zoom, then we looked individually at all 21 candidates, and then collectively at all 21 candidates. So in that case, we're looking at either all three of us say yes, we would like to screen them, or two of us say yes, and the third one says, I can go along with that. So we come to some consensus at that point on the ones that we would like to talk to individually. And we do the same thing, we're asking you to do a screening interview. We write the questions that match your profile. We give every candidate the exact same interview. We all ask the same questions each time. We're very careful with our time limits. I mean, we won't cut somebody off mid-sentence, but, you know, it's unfair for us to give one candidate, let them run over 10 minutes, and not let another. So we're very careful to treat everybody the same. We're doing some individual rating as we're going. At the end of the process, then, when we talk to 10, was it Steve, I think? Then we put our heads together. And now we have to come, before I told you that we would say, if you have two of them wanted and one of them wouldn't, then we would say, okay, let's give them a shot. At this point, we really want to find the candidates that we all three agree meets your profile. So we agree pretty much at this time.
And just to be clear, because I was neglectful about this, there actually were four of us involved in the interviews.
Oh, I'm sorry, Phil. Sure.
We have a colleague.
Sorry, I apologize. Out of sight. Don't tell him I forgot him.
He's probably watching.
Yeah.
So, hi, Phil.
Sorry.
He had shoulder surgery five days ago, and is not ready to travel yet. But so, all four of us, and what Wheeler, once again, we're looking for was consensus around candidates and agreement on those things. And so that's how we got to that list, so.
Yeah.
Michael, if I may, just one follow-up short. Of the initial group and of the four, can you give us any sense of how many of those were folks that you proactively found versus the folks that applied without being poked?
You know, I don't have an actual list, but generally, it's about 40 to 50% of people that we call.
And sometimes we, sometimes what happens, too, is that someone will begin an application, but they don't finish it. So we've got some interest. Then we'll give them a call and say, hey, what's your interest in the position? We're going to be interviewing in about a week. Would you, is it, can you let us know if you're interested in talking to us? So there's a, kind of more than just the two sides, there's also kind of some middle ground, too. And if we've called somebody about the candidate, and they say, yeah, that's a good one, so. Or maybe we've met the candidate before, too.
Thank you.
Right, comments, other comments or questions?
I'll just make a comment. I do like the varying experience. I think that's, you know, we're seeing different people, different avenues, different education bases, as far as like their extended, you know, master's education, that kind of thing, doctorates. So I do like the variety. And, you know, I think being able to have a pool that's, you know, large and been from other states and everything, I think is important to just kind of make sure that we're getting out there and attracting people. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with the four that have been brought forward. I'm excited to see, you know, to interview them, and, yeah.
Anybody else? Mary, go ahead, please. Yes, Mary, go ahead. That's raising her hand.
Yeah. Now she's frozen.
I'm not sure that Eric heard this. Maybe you said it. By the time we got the culling down of the list, did anyone that wanted it get dropped? Because they already had a job, or they already found a position?
Did you hear that question?
Yes.
Okay.
There were a few, but not a lot.
Yeah.
There was, there were probably two.
Yeah. And remember, I told you sometimes we call if they've begun their process? So one of the people that we had recruited, we called, and that person had, was accepted in another business, so.
And there were also people who were on the list who we weren't going to talk to, who got jobs, too.
Yeah.
So it wasn't just that we lost people who were interested in talking with it, at least exploring it. We, there were people who applied, who took jobs in the time after they applied here.
Mary, did you hear that? Okay. I'm going to guess so. All right, Enrique, any comments or questions?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
All right. And no additional comments, really. I appreciate seeing the diversity of the slate based off of the education and the experiences provided. Look forward to interviewing with each one of them, getting to know them a little bit better, learn a bit more about their backgrounds and what they bring, and how Prior Lake will fit each one of them, as well as how well they'll fit all the different needs and opportunities we have here at Prior Lake in Savage.
Thank you.
We're anxiously awaiting what you think, too. After you get done. Our goal and our hope is that after meeting these four candidates, your work is hard and difficult and challenging, and you have lots of discussion and some disagreement, and you wrestle with it a lot. And at the end, you say, yeah. You know, one of the things we talked about really early on was, you know, the number of candidates doesn't matter as long as you have one great candidate that fits who you want to lead you. And so we oftentimes use the metric ourselves, that I think is a false one, of how many applicants we have. We report that out because we think people are curious about that. But really, if we knew exactly what met, what would work here, and what you want, and we were inside your heads, and you've all had one common thread going through, we would work that way. But right now, this is the part where, you know, the science and the art come together, and you guys are going to do that, so.
Julie, any comments or questions?
I don't have any questions. I echo Enrique's comments. I'm excited that peers that, the four candidates have all been principals. I'm excited about their background and their experience that has brought them into leadership roles within their districts, so appreciate that.
Great, Amy?
I agree. I think we can move forward. I like that they've all had classroom experience or, and/or the social worker piece is interesting, too, so especially in this day and age. So thank you for your help and guidance. And I hope it's difficult, but not too difficult.
We'll be here to help.
Yeah. And I'll then just finish up by saying that I appreciate all the work that went into this as board liaison. I know I did regular check-ins with Steve on the process. I know they were working the search from day one. So the advantage of having the rolling search was lovely, because right away, as soon as someone came in, they were working on it or reaching out to somebody. And so I thank you for that. And I think I remember something along the lines of, you've done your job well. If we have to stay up late at night wrestling over, we've got some good candidates to pick from.
Good.
Do I have board direction at this point to move forward? We don't need a formal vote, but I do need to think that the majority of the board is telling me to move forward and accept the slate as presented.
Yes.
Okay, Mary, is that a yes or a question?
That was a question. Just before we vote, because I tried to speak up, I'm sorry, the connection isn't that good. But if new, can we get confirmation that as new candidates potentially come in, that if we vote on the slate, you know, can we reserve the right to add additional to, for us to review?
Yes.
Okay.
Even though search is closed, we can still do that?
We would present them as we did tonight, and you'd have to accept that person. And you could move forward.
Okay. No, we don't. All right. So other than that, now, in addition to that or knowing that, can I just see a nod of heads if we're okay?
Yep.
Yeah, comfortable? We don't need a formal vote? It looks like I have full board direction to accept the slate as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. You've already set up the dates and times for your next rounds. And one of the things that you probably need to do, if not tonight, because in a week, you're back here interviewing candidates, is to look and see who wants to take topics. And you may need to do that tonight, or you can do that in a different way. But just, we want to help you to be organized for that first meeting. And somebody on the board could serve as the person who collates all those questions, creates one sheet that you could all refer back to.
Yeah, we're going to suggest that you take an area, as Steve has said, and then have two, and maybe even a reserved question. So two for sure, that you've each got two to ask. And then maybe even a reserve, which, you know, potentially could come on the second interview if you choose to do that, too.
Do you want to, should we take a little time now? Just, yeah, one minute, Mary. Well, should we take time, then? Do you want to talk us through to make sure we get those areas correct? And do people want to, tonight, take those areas?
I wrote down the areas. I mean, I have them down to 10, if, so, I mean, I think. I mean, I think we can talk about it, but.
Yeah, at the table. Okay, Mary, go ahead.
I was going to say that the questions may actually be different, whether they have superintendent experience or not. How are we going to navigate that?
I think we want the same questions.
We want the same questions. Yeah.
How do you feel they're different, Mary?
Well, a superintendent who's lived through COVID is going to have different lessons learned and life lessons than somebody who hasn't, particularly in the last couple of years. And we may want to ask different questions, or vary the questions based upon level of experience.
Respectfully, Mary, I think, I mean, what I've heard pretty clearly is I think we need to be, I think we should plan ahead to structure questions, probably to bring out what you want to hear from all of them to that end. But I believe that all the questions to all of the candidates should be the same. I think we can probably find a way to talk about how your experience in whatever role you had impacted this past two years. If we're talking about COVID, for example. But I think we would need to have a way for that question to be the same for all four candidates.
Yeah, I would agree.
They'll be very different answers.
Depending on what they were doing for that position.
Depending on their experience, yeah.
And where they worked.
If you're going to respond as superintendent, you're going to want them, no matter what their role is, as the superintendent, this is how I would respond to it.
Got it.
So they're going to use the lens of superintendent in their responses to you, no matter what their experience has been.
Mary, that's a good question. And I was just thinking back to my experience last year when I was an interim superintendent in a school district in the middle of COVID. And I didn't unilaterally make any COVID decisions. We did those as a cabinet. And so the people that were a part of that cabinet could talk about the, and their experience and their role in it, but also talk about it from their perspective of whether they agreed or disagreed with the ultimate decision that was made, and how that played out in their community. And so I think they would end up fairly well-informed and be able to answer it, how they would lead in a situation, would have led in a situation, either the same or differently. No, I was just thinking, that's how I understood it.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Well, just an idea for consideration. I'm looking at the rubric, and we have eight areas of the leadership profile that we have identified, that I think we're going to want to be asking questions that get to those things. Could we each just quickly star two of those areas or that we would prefer to be able to ask a question of? And then allow perhaps the chair to direct that? Or collaborate, you know, collate all those answers and make sure, maybe we don't get to ask the exact one that we want, but we get to ask about something we want? I'm just trying to simplify.
Yeah, and I kind of, I looked at it a little bit differently. I just looked at the sample questions, and there are 10 different areas in the sample questions, which I think would probably hit right along where the rubric, a lot of them are the same. But, you know, we could take one or, and just say, hey, this, I'll pick something out of this area. If someone feels strongly about something, which would be pretty similar to what Jonathan's saying. But they would have sample questions if people wanted to use or modify them in whatever way. I mean, there's general, I mean, teaching and, I mean, it hits a lot of the topics that we have in our leadership profile. But I also think it brings out a couple different areas, too, that can be unique. So I don't know, I just thought if people were strong about a certain area, that they wanted to ask a question, then, you know, we can kind of go that way.
Do you typically advise you start with the 10 areas and divide up, or the profile?
We were just looking, Anne and I were looking at each other, and we said, Jonathan's suggestion is a good one. We've never had anybody do it that way.
This is recorded, I would like.
Because then we can go from the rubric back to the sample questions.
You know, I actually think that, I think if you would choose a place, and you had someone who you sent your questions in with enough time, that if Jonathan's question and Julie's questions are the same, or cover the same area, you get a chance to kind of revisit it again and suggest that, that that might be a really good way of doing that. I like that. I don't know how you feel, Anne.
Kind of thought it was interesting, too. And you can still use the sample questions, I'm sure they'll fit.
They fit, kind of.
Yeah. And I think it's unlikely that you're going to come up with the same questions, but somebody should monitor that a bit.
For sure. I'm going to make a recommendation on that part.
Please do.
Since, just of the monitoring, I'm, I'll either nominate Amy. To kind of collect, so that it's not all on you, because a lot would spin on you. So Amy, or I could.
Or you could work together on it, I don't think that would be a problem.
Yeah, either one, I would say. Do you want to take them?
I'm happy to do it, if everyone's comfortable with that.
Thank you, yeah.
And for Amy to collect, and then Amy can use her magical English and make sure we kind of are parallel in structure and well-done. And then we will all have a copy prior to the interview, so there are no surprise questions at the table. If we look at our rubric, it looks like we have eight areas. Do we each want to take an area of interest and try and craft two questions around that area? Is that the, or does each person take two areas and write one question? Could I make it any more complicated?
I think maybe just an area.
One area, two questions, is?
Yeah, I think one area, two questions. I think that's a little simpler.
I think, and I guess I'd say, not necessarily the opposite. I think if we each say an area, two of us might, two or three of us might say the same area. I think if we each say an area, Amy can assign, ideally not, you know, just assign questions and topics for us, and we can pull up, pull the questions off of here. But if Julie and I both want to ask a finance question, we should both be able to ask a finance question, but I think we just don't want to leave any areas out.
I mean, okay. I would say, yeah, I don't know if it matters so much, who's asking the question?
Right.
as far as what's being asked.
Right.
So.
Let's each take an area.
Honestly, I, I mean, I'll, I don't care. I'll pick whatever area. I don't really care either. I mean.
I see some figures.
Yes, Mary, go ahead.
Are you guys looking at a rubric? I just have a sample rubric in the.
That's all we have.
Is there something?
That, that's all we have is the sample.
So we will have a full, what we'll do is we'll take the points in the leadership profile. They'll be broken down with an area for evidence and a score. And I have a paper packet for you, Mary, as well. And those copies will be made for us before the interview. But if you do look at, the rubric is broken down, that's, that's what we'll be looking at for picking our area. I believe the rubric is, I don't know if it's numbered, but it's separated out.
The rubric only has two examples in the presentation, Mary. That's probably what you're seeing.
Right.
And so if you scroll up to the actual leadership.
Leadership profile, yep. Thank you.
Okay, go to last week's session on the leadership profile and use that.
It's in the presentation.
It's in the presentation on pages four and five.
It's four and five.
Same thing that's on our website.
So we could.
Okay, okay, I see it now, the leadership profile and the PowerPoint right after the search review.
Yep.
That's what we're talking about?
So am I drawing straws or just going around the table? Or someone speak up if they feel strongly?
Yeah.
About an area? Okay, let's do that.
So to be clear, Amy is coordinating.
Amy's coordinating the questions. We'll send the questions. As related to your area.
So we'll, we will write two questions for our area each.
Who's assigning the areas?
We're just going to talk about it right now.
Two draft questions, they will be emailed privately to Amy. Amy will go through and, and collate, make sure there's no duplicates and that they all make, flow well. And then she will give us the finalists back, so we all know every question that will be asked at the table. And we'll stick to that for both days of candidate interviews. Do I have that right?
Yep.
All right. So right now, do, if you want to take a minute and look at your leadership profile? And do people want to let me know if you feel strongly about one of those areas and drafting two questions, please?
Feel strongly? Okay.
I'll take the equity one.
Equity for Enrique, thank you.
Unifier for me, if that's okay, unifier?
Yep.
Yep. Let me go back to that. Great.
I'll take relationship builder.
Relationship? For Stacy? Okay.
I can hit financial.
You would take financial, great.
I will take collaborator.
Collaborator? Great. Stacy and Amy both?
I already picked. I did not go, but it does, I'm, I'll be okay.
All right, I can take, why don't I take, I'll take communicator.
So that leaves two.
Yep.
And you can take, if you want to take both and ask one.
I can take both. Okay.
And it may shake out to what kind of questions are asked.
Right, sure.
And how it lines up.
Or there may be gaps.
We will trust your discretion and direction on the collating of questions. And just let us know if you need update or if you need assistance. I think it's okay if, reach out to Stacy for that as well, if you need to bounce off somebody. So we're clear and processed. We now have our name each by one. We will draft two questions using the packet we've been provided.
Do you want them in a certain?
Yeah, let's pick a date.
Because we're going to have to get them back out to us by.
Yep.
So.
Also, can everybody have their two questions to Amy?
By Thursday?
That's what I was thinking. Finalize them Friday.
Thursday?
Thursday, yeah.
All right, by Thursday.
I would just say, how long do you want to have to work on them and collaborate? Do we want to do it sooner, so you have more time?
I'm good with Thursday.
Okay.
If you'd like to get them to me sooner, that'd be great.
Yep, so as soon as possible, Thursday's deadline. Let's say Thursday noon, so you've got time, how about?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And then we'll try and finalize Friday. It might leak into Monday as we, you know, approach the first interviews.
Okay.
And then we will stick to the questions as delivered so that they are consistent both days.
And I think I'm comfortable, Amy, giving you discretion to edit whatever I send you as a question to. If, if there's, if you feel like there's a better way for it to be phrased or something like that, I'm okay with that.
And I can reach out for clarity too.
Okay.
Thanks.
Clarity from me?
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're that far in the process, what next?
Well, the next thing is, is we will schedule the interviews for you.
Okay.
Talk to the candidates. We will let them know your timeline and the dates when you're going to do those things, so people can be prepared. My understanding is that you will ask the interview people here in person. And so anybody out of state will need to be reimbursed for their travel expenses.
Certainly.
And that, we'll take care of that tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And you should be all set there. We will also begin letting people know who aren't going forward, who we interviewed, that they, they will not at this point be going forward. That doesn't mean that, you know, stranger things have happened. But let them know out of respect for them. And then at the end, once you've chosen a superintendent, we send out a communication to everyone who's applied for the position to let them know it's been filled with, and by, and name the person as well.
Okay.
So we will all, also, as you know, be around at any time and at any point you need our help. You know, I think you, hopefully you know that's happening already. And will continue to happen as you move forward and, and as you go through this really exciting process. And I, and I hope you're excited by the whole thing.
I am.
This is a, this is a new chance to, to do some other things. And it's not a criticism of the current superintendent in any possible way. Everyone brings in a new lens to it, a new way of looking at things and a new opportunity to, to build your stronger schools and stronger communities here, so.
And I'm excited that they want to come here and learn more about us.
They do, so.
Great. So is that it for, when do we get the names of the candidates then, after you've reached out to everybody else?
Nope. We'll pass those out to you.
Jonathan, question.
May I ask a, just a process question that maybe you addressed, but it's not clear in my head? When we are conducting the interviews, at, at what point do you recommend we go through sort of a debriefing and the deliberations on the candidates? Should that all be, should we be having a short discussion with us after each candidate? Should it all be done at the end of all four? What is, how, how should that look?
You know, personally, I think that you should hold off till the fourth candidate has been interviewed. You may have some questions and you may, after the first round of interviews, saying, we're a little stiff in there, guys. Come on, let's have some, let's, let's put some energy into it. And that's the only things, those are the things you should be talking about in terms of process. But I think if you begin making decisions about candidates prior to having seen them all, I think that's probably a conversation you should not have.
It's bias in conversation, yes.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and that will spill over to the next candidate.
Sure.
The other thing I would suggest, I know that we're a good distance away. If it's possible to bring the, the table up for the interview either closer to you, because I know that you will, you'll want to do that, it's just.
We're exploring options for how to make it most comfortable and still audible.
We're going to put some really bright lights right over the top of them.
It can feel really.
We get the best answers under bright lights.
Yes, right.
Yeah, that's a great point, Steve.
Yep. Yep, we've been working with the team a little bit here to brainstorm some ideas to, to address that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's stressful, no matter how you do it, for you and for the candidate. But it also, it doesn't have to be the extra level of stress. You can try to, to make it a conversation as much as possible.
I've viewed several at other board meetings where the candidate is at the podium the entire time.
Oh, my gosh.
And that sounds incredibly stressful.
How uncomfortable is that? Yeah, yeah.
Or, or they're down at one end of a very long table with one bottle of water and everyone else is about 20 feet away.
You know, and, and the, the thing is too, sorry, Steve. Most of your interactions with your superintendent, your current, your former and your new, are more conversational. So that's how you, and not that you don't want to see them be able to make a presentation, but you also want them to be able to relate because your profile is full of relationship kinds of characteristics that you're looking for, so let's let them show you that.
I, I will just, as I go through the questions, I know, I'm just thinking about one of my own challenges in life. If there's about four minutes for each question, it's, I think it's just going to be important that my question doesn't take up two of them.
Good point.
Right? I mean, it's just the shorter the questions, because it's not, it's not about us. It's about hearing what the candidates have to say.
Yeah, good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we anxiously await the, the next steps in the process. And, and thank you for everything that you've done so far to, to make this a, a good search, a productive one. And we're looking to see that you have a great new leader in a month, in about three weeks.
Thank you, so not, no other official business now at this point? Do I need a motion to adjourn a special meeting? Okay, then the meeting will be adjourned. Thank you very much for making the time to be here tonight.
Thank you, Anne, Jane and Steve. Hi, Mary.